Okay. Good morning, everyone. This is Monday, January 27th. It's nine o'clock. Posted Board of Selectmen's meeting. And present, Selectman Baumgartner, myself, Paul Sadik, Richard Brown, Ally Galls. Richard Brown is the Town Administrator. Ally's our Administrative Assistant. Also, Lisa is not here because Lisa is on vacation. And we've been freezing. She's been pretty warm down in the Caribbean somewhere. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is public, anybody that wants to, members of the public that wants to talk to the Board of Selectmen?
No. Can I hold that right or after if I'd like to speak?
You, yeah, why not?
Okay.
Okay, you don't want to do it now?
Just clarifying, no.
Oh, okay, very good. All right. The first thing on the agenda is to sign an agreement with the town of Lakeville to use the Lakeville Animal Shelter. It's a very similar agreement that we've had in the past. And it's been recommended by the dog or the animal control officer. And what is the board's feelings? Richard, what's your recommendation? Are you seeing anything wrong with you?
No, my recommendation is that enter into the agreement.
Okay. Lee, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we enter into the agreement?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Second thing on the agenda is sign some renewals, annual renewals for motor vehicle licenses. And the first one on here is Janz Used Cars. This is at 11 County Road, East Freetown, Mass. This is a renewal license. And motor vehicle dealer's license, this is a Class II license. And it states a maximum of 30 vehicles, 25 in the front of the fence, in sellable condition, and five behind the fence in repairable condition. I do have a question on this. Has the building inspector gone out, or anybody gone out to take a look at this particular location? Because when I saw 25 vehicles, first of all, it's very rare to see a vehicle at this location, number one, but I don't think there's enough room for 25 in the front.
To inspect it, no, not that I know of.
Okay. I would, from my own personal point of view here, I would like to have somebody go out and take a look to make sure there is enough room for 25 vehicles. If there's not, then we can offer the license before we approve it. What do you think, Mr. Baumgartner?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so we'll hold off on that and we'll ask someone, Mary or her designated, to go out and check that one out. The second one is for Ray's Garage. This is a second Class II motor vehicle license. This is a renewal. This is at 61 North Main Street in the Sonnet. And this is motor vehicle dealer's license registration effective of 1190, a maximum of four vehicles. I don't have any problem with that. There's certainly enough room for four vehicles. What's your pleasure?
Me either. No, I think we should renew that one.
You want to make a motion?
Make a motion to renew.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The third one is Z&amp;J's Automotive Incorporated. And...
I have some issues with this one.
Yeah, this is a Class II motor vehicle license. It is located at 12 Janice Marine Way in East Freetown. Motor vehicle dealer's license registration effective on 1190. First of all, there's no number of vehicles stated on the license.
Right.
Secondly, there was some supporting documentation that I reviewed.
It's the next page.
Well, there was some...
Oh, some recommendations.
Yeah, well, there's recommendations, but there's also, I want to go back and look at the...
Want me to get it online for you, Paul?
I got it here. I got it here. License renewal application. He's got the business address of 66 Brayley Road on the license renewal application for license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble secondhand motor vehicles or parts thereof. So that's kind of discrepant. Says he has a license in Florida. Then the next one on the third page, this is a Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Industrial Accident Office of Investigation on Congress Street. This is a form from the state. Unless I'm reading this wrong, the first question on here is, are you, are you an employer? Check the appropriate box. And he checks three, which says, "We are a corporation and its officers have exercised their rights of exemption per chapter 152, section 14, and we have no employees, no workman's comp insurance required."
Yet there was people working there.
There was people working there when we went there at the fire.
Yeah, he's, I don't think he is a corporation for the purposes of exempting from workers' comp.
So this form doesn't appear to be correct?
I don't think so.
Okay. That's what I noticed. Affidavit of the town of Freetown. Sure, by the county, for the, I, at the best of my knowledge and belief, have filed all statements, and that's okay. The surety bond that he has here, that he submitted, is dated February 2012. It doesn't say if it's still in effect. I couldn't find anything that indicated it was still in effect. Okay, let me go back to where we left off. And in here, we had asked the chief of police...
To do a little research.
...to do some research for us. We also asked the fire chief and the building inspector to go up there and inspect. Respect to the, this is from the police, chief of police, Carlton Abbott. Respect to the above identified Class II auto dealer's license application, I suggest the following, if it has not already been done, be completed. That the applicant submit a written plan designating street and number, total number of vehicles, and the layout, including where the vehicles will be positioned, employees and customers parking also on the premises to be licensed. That the applicant submit a copy of the article of organization, if it's a corporation, or a copy of the business certificate obtained from the town clerk's office. That the applicant submit proof of the $25,000 bond or acceptable alternative required on the Mass General Law 140, section 58. That the applicant submit a letter from the landlord granting permission to use the property for such a business. That the applicant complete a criminal records check form and the results be obtained, or the town, if authorized, conduct a criminal records check prior to any license being issued. That the inspection be made to determine the reasonable number of vehicles that can be licensed for the premises. That a zoning determination be made, that a determination be made as to whether the premise qualifies for an occupancy permit prior to the license being issued, and that the building inspector and fire chief inspect the proposed premise, as it is under my understanding that torches and other flammable items may be, may be present. Okay. The building inspector and the fire chief did go up and look at this property on Thursday, January 23rd. Fire chief Sylvia and I made a visit. This is a memo to the board from the building inspector, made a visit to the above location. At the time of the site visit, we met two individuals who worked for the company. We asked their permission to walk through the building and through the vehicles in the yard. Also, we asked to take the photos that we have sent to you. They've sent us probably 15 photos of the, of the location. This, the site is located in industrial zone for the town zoning map. The site did not contain any vehicles that were shown as for sale, but there were many vehicles in various stages of disrepair in pieces. We counted approximately 100 vehicles on the area used by this business. For zoning bylaw, Article 11.18H, the table of use, scrap or junk yards are permitted in this zone, but you have to have the proper permit. It would, that was my addition to it. It would be our recommendation that the board considers issuing a Class III license, junk or scrapyard for this business. It would be, it would be helpful to limit the number of vehicles at this location. There are currently on, they are currently on land not limited to the lot where the addresses. Detach a copies of the zoning bylaws and so forth. We went, we happened, we saw the fire that went on down there and all the vehicles, but then we got a number of vehicles from both the building inspector and the fire chief pictures of those vehicles. And I think something needs to be done with the, with the location here before we issue a license. I mean, there's just way too many vehicles down there. It looks like a, it looks like a junkyard.
Originally, wasn't there permit for used car lot to sell and repair cars?
Class II license, will you, will you buy used cars, refurbish them, and sell them?
Now it turned into a junkyard where they're stripping cars, selling parts.
Which is a permitted use.
It is a permitted use, with the right permit.
Yeah, with the right permit. So there's a lot of unanswered questions here.
What is the name of the business now that's there?
What is it?
Z&amp;J.
Z&amp;J.
Z&amp;J. Z&amp;J Automotive.
Automotive.
I mean, the, what we would need to do is establish a number of vehicles that are permitted on the lot and not allow vehicles to go on any other property that may be adjacent to it. Also, getting the approval of the landlord, because the landlord may in fact be renting it for a Class II license and needs to know we're considering a Class III.
We might want to also consider hours of operations under commit.
If, we're already operating out. I mean, the place was burnt out.
I don't know. You know, they're basically taking vehicles and shipping them overseas.
But they're cutting them up, it appears.
Yeah, so they're probably working on either some of the backlog or have just suspended operations.
What about the waste on oil and gas and stuff if they're cutting them up?
We don't know. We don't know.
The reason why I'm here is I live on Chippewa Road.
Okay.
And I have sent you a letter about...
We know, yeah.
That's why I'm here.
About this place?
Not this place. The traffic.
The traffic on...
Traffic on Chippewa Road.
That's why I'm here.
I read it.
And it's a shame.
Because someone did send us a letter, an anonymous letter about this location.
Not me.
Yes.
I've sent you a letter and I've sent the accessory letter. That's why I'm here.
Wait, the problem...
Forty-three years and I have the right to live in peace, if you can see what comes down that road, really.
Go ahead, Richard.
You're welcome to sit in my living room and watch, really.
No, 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 we'll let you talk in a second. Let's, let's deal with this issue here.
I wasn't even aware of this. It's a towering inferno down there. You just have to see it.
I mean, once, I mean, you can permit them as a Class III, set the numbers of vehicles they can have. You can also, as part of their plan, ask them how they're dealing with waste products.
Absolutely.
Ask, you should have the right to see. I'm sorry.
The problem is, I understand the regulations, is ultimately, we probably have less control over Class Threes than we do over Class Twos.
Yeah, we've never licensed that place for a Class III.
No, we've never licensed it for...
So they're operating, right now, after December 31st, they were operating without any license.
Right, and this was also...
And prior to that, they were operating with a Class II, actually doing Class III work.
Yeah, and this was also the location a year ago, if memory serves, where there was a name change, and we had difficulty affecting the name change because one of the people involved is no longer in the country. So, I mean, they, they did file for corporation, as a corporation, but I think for the purposes, again, of providing workers' comp, I don't think that exempts them from any of the requirements. And they've got to show, you know, all of those things. My, my recommendation at this point is that, you know, that we not issue the license now, that we correspond and tell them that we need additional information and that they are not permitted to operate until they provide that.
I would agree with you. And in fact, I would think that some of the recommendations, if not all the recommendations made by the police chief, we would require.
Yes. What do you think? You know, there's so many questions, you can't answer them. And looking back on their first permit, which was to buy and sell used cars, that morphed into a junkyard and into a building and into a neighborhood where they were, when they were working, I guess, in the middle of the night, according to a letter we received anonymously, but a letter. So we, one, we got to have some control over that. We just can't have people doing...
That wasn't me, because I go to bed and I don't want to do...
The EPA has got to, got to have some restrictions as to how you handle waste oil and...
Has the EPA been there?
I don't know, Ms...
I don't, and that would be between them and...
Sure, absolutely.
And DEP. Actually, DEP would regulate them, not EPA. And there's probably some other requirements that the police chief would need to get involved in, because if you're in effect cutting vehicles and either selling parts or whatever, then he needs to make, ensure that the vehicles are acquired appropriately.
Exactly. Somewhere along the line, they got to have a title if they're taking the cars apart.
That's illegal if they're selling parts.
So that would be the deal. So based on that, Paul, I would make a motion that we don't answer, that we don't issue a permit until the various questions we've just discussed are answered.
I would agree with that. And at this point, we would, we would have to have the building inspector issue an order.
Cease and desist.
Cease and desist order.
Yeah, because if they don't have a permit, they're in violation of zoning.
Right.
I mean, they, they could appeal it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I suspect Board of Zoning Appeals wouldn't act on this since we've given them an outline for compliance.
Yeah, once they, they meet the requirements, you're going to put the requirements together based on the information we have.
Based upon the chief's letter.
Yeah. We'll, we'll entertain the permit again. We don't know whether it's going to be Class II or Class III at that point, but at this point, they're not going to get a permit.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
I don't, I'm not really a pain in the neck, or pain in the ass, whatever. I just want to look comfortable.
And just remember, you're getting taped. You're going to be on TV. Get a good picture.
I could trip over that very easily and break it. Really, I'm not a hot ass. Is there anyone in the area that has wells there where this hazardous waste may be going in the ground?
Not, well, first of all, there's no hazardous waste going in the ground.
But you don't know that.
We haven't verified that.
Yeah, well, I, I'm...
And the building inspector had gone out there last week, and they would have, they would have made it part of their report if there wasn't any.
Maybe.
First of all, no, that, that street actually has water, has city water.
And it's zoned for industry, so...
Oh, I know that.
Has city water, so that's not an issue.
Safe industry, right?
That's not an issue, ma'am.
So at this point, only because of the laws, the state laws, are pretty much in control of how we run the meeting.
Right.
The only time you're literally able to speak is in new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we can bring this up in new business, but it kind of breaks the flow of the down meeting.
Okay, no problem. You can continue. I'll keep quiet.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
No.
It's all right. All right, so we're going to...
I'm just a little concerned, you know?
We're going to keep this in, we're not going to act on this permit, correct?
Correct.
All right. We'll move on to the next.
Did you want to make that motion, though, not to issue the permit?
You mean to make a motion not to issue the permit?
I would make a motion that the item be tabled until the applicant provides the information that has been discussed.
I'll make a motion to, my motion is as Richard read on his iPad. How about that?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We, we'll lead the motion for the first one, then, for Janz, to hold off until we have that inspected also.
Yeah, you pass that one, too.
Huh?
Yeah, you, you actually passed on that one, so that...
Yeah, we'll have to make a motion not to issue the permit for, for Janz Auto until we have it inspected by the building inspector.
All right. Make a motion not to have Janz, issue Janz permit until it's inspected by the building.
Second.
Permission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
To be clear, the, I don't have as much of a problem with Janz continuing operation because it's a matter of working out what number is...
That's all we care about. That's all we care about on Janz, is do they have enough room for 25 cars in front?
But the J and Z, I have a problem with them continuing because we don't even know what it is.
That's right. Absolutely.
Can I just ask a question?
Well, yeah, we're going to, let's continue what I read.
No, I just want to know about how long that building's been there, how long have they been operating for J and Z? You don't really know?
We have to look back at our records.
Oh. Sorry.
What's the next on the agenda here? All right, personnel. There's nothing on the Board of Health personnel.
Okay, I got some change of statuses I have to approve. Let me, we've got, let me find the letter here for Mary. Okay. We have a change of status request for Lynette Langivanuzel...
Uzel.
Uzel?
Uzel.
Uzel. She's a senior clerk in the building department, and her rate of pay is, is going up from $14.96 to $15.23 based on her rate of length of service.
Make a motion to adopt the recommendation by Mary.
Second.
All, you know, you call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Lynette. An employee change of status report named Dana Bissett. He's the assistant transfer station person, and he, he deserves a length of service increase from $14.35 to $15.14. Motion to approve? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
Are you voting on those also?
Yes.
Okay. You got them, is voting on both of those, okay.
And then there's a change of status for Danielle Poole. She's a call firefighter. She has resigned, and I'd like to thank Dana for her service and all the things she's done for the town. She's moving out of state, that's why she's leaving.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve with a caveat that we send her a note saying, "Thanks for your service."
Agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppo, aye, all opposed? Okay, so I think I'm done.
No, you got one more?
Which one?
Another resignation.
John LaRonda.
Oh, John LaRonda, okay, another resignation. Mr. John R. LaRonda, who we happened to see fighting the fire.
That was the father fighting the fire.
The firefighter, saying he's getting much too old to do this. But John R. LaRonda is retiring, resigning, and he's, his reason is Mr. LaRonda is moving out of state. So entertain a motion to accept his resignation.
Make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with a caveat that we send Mr. LaRonda a little note saying, "Thank you for your years of services and call firefighter."
So no one gets confused, this is John LaRonda's son, John, that's moving out of state. And in his place the other day at the big fire, John, who was a fireman for years here, was out fighting the fire, replacing his son.
There's two more that just came in.
We have two more. Employee change of status report from, for Thomas E. Ashley, Jr. He is moving from a student police officer at a rate of $16.53 an hour to a new probationary patrolman at $25.09 an hour. And I'm pleased with that because he's an honorable young guy who's done a great job for us. So I'd like a motion to change Mr. Ashley's status.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Welcome aboard Mr. Ashley.
I think he, they graduate from the academy, I believe it's February 7th, right? And we're all invited to attend the graduation.
They graduate from the police academy February 7th. That's absolutely right. Another, the other change of status report that I had is for Joshua Simmons. He's a dispatcher, communications dispatcher, and at a rate of $15.81 an hour. And due to a length of service increase, he will become a communications dispatcher at $16.59 an hour. So I'd like a motion to changes, for a change of status report on Mr. Simmons.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard Mr. Simmons. So I think that's it now.
Okay, now, do we have...
We have another item.
Yes, sir.
You snuck them in.
Well, they came up after we got the...
Yeah, I get it.
I'm trying to find the dates, but not sure that that would necessarily be important. But we've received a request to use the senior center for a Democratic Town Committee meeting. There were two dates in February that were presented. The, under the policy that the board put in place, the Council on Aging Director indicated that that required Board of Selectmen approval before the building could be used for that purpose.
Well, for any purpose.
For an outside agency, yes.
Outside agency, right.
12/3, 26. On the 12th or the 26th of February.
Trying to, there were two dates in February.
The 12th or 26th.
Sorry, February 12th or February 26th, starting at 6:30 PM. The indication is that they take, usually last 1.5, one hour to one and a half hours. The instructions from the caucus chairs suggest that folks be there before the meeting starts, so you're looking at, you know, probably a commitment of two to two and a half hours of time.
And who, so what time we time out, that they could expect people getting there?
People would probably start getting there for the meeting itself at 6:30, but I think people would get there to set up probably at about 6:00 that night.
Okay, so 6:00 for a couple hours, 6:00 to maybe 9:00, three hours.
6:30 to 9:00, yeah.
Those are right. Okay. And that's for the Democratic?
That's for the Democratic Town Committee.
Okay. And...
The requirements for this meeting, besides that it has to take place between February 8th and March 2nd, is that they be held in a public location that is compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
That's a state law, right?
And that's, and that's compliant, so it's compliant. Okay. Now, do we have other, like Republican National Committee, Town Committee use it also?
I don't know. I haven't, this is the first request of this sort that I have received since I've been here.
Yeah, I don't remember. I've been on the board a couple of years. I don't remember ever, ever voting on this.
But we have been made aware that public buildings may have been used.
Without approval of the board?
Yeah.
Well, have you run it by our attorney?
Yes, I have.
And what did he say?
Said a couple of things. The first is that...
Anything you can repeat on television?
Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to phrase it without equivocating as much as our legal counsel did when I raised the issue with them. Certainly, the board has the right to determine the use of its property. If you allow the use of this building by one political group, then you have to allow any political group, Republican Town Committee, the Tea Party Town Committee, any other group that represents itself in the same manner, you have to give them equal opportunity. He suggests that if we have allowed the use in the past, that we should allow it to continue in the future. However, the board was not aware of the activity occurring in the past, so I don't think you can reasonably be held to that standard.
Is it just political parties or is it...
How does it impact on the use of the senior center, like when we let congregational church use the land for their cookout?
That would be a charity.
That's a charity. If you start picking winners and losers in this, then you can be accused of censoring an activity. So although one is a civic group as opposed to a political group, I would think, once you have it opened up to the public, then the safer course is to continue to do so.
So what about the cost that's incurred? In other words, the cost, for example, I'm not to concern with the heat or light, but if we have to have somebody open that building?
I think if there is a cost that we incur with the opening and closing of that building, I think it is a reasonable expectation that the group involved pay for that cost. But again, we have to be careful because we can't go out of our way to accommodate something like the congregational church.
Right, and not accommodate somebody else.
Right.
Absolutely.
So we can't tell them, you get a freebie because, you know, we like you and we happen to want to open the building for you. But another group that we don't have the affiliation with, we say, by the way, it's going to cost you three hours of overtime.
Can we do, in other words, in the future, if this gets out of line, out of, out of control, the use of town buildings, at that point, we could change our policy.
I think you could change your policy as it relates to scheduling and perhaps reimbursement. But I think use, you're probably committing yourself to allowing it.
So in essence, because it was used before without any knowledge of the board, that anybody can remember, certainly, I've been on for two years, this is actually my third year, I don't remember approving this before. Then we, we're held liable. In other words, we have to continue because somewhere along the line, the town allowed the building to be used.
Well, I think what confuses it is that somewhere along the line, a former board member was involved in permitting that use. So that makes it more difficult for the, for you to say as a board, there was no board knowledge. In fact, there was no board action, but the fact that one board member was involved makes it difficult.
Well, let's clarify that, these two board members know nothing about it.
Not naming names.
All right, why don't we just allow?
And the other thing I just like, and I'm not sure about this, but I think that when we allowed the church to do a cookout there, I think they might have made a donation to the C.O.A. to cover our expenses.
I don't know if they did, I know they used outside.
I'll check with Barbara, but I think they did.
But there is a difference between a voluntary donation, which in fact is by nature voluntary, as opposed to a compulsory fee. But I think we can require in any event that, you know, whatever is done to set up the room, it has to be returned to its original condition. It has to be left clean, you know, all of those things are reasonable.
Well, maybe what we should do, we'll take the vote, send the, send the committee a letter just saying, listen, we ask you that whatever changes you make in there, that you, that you put back the way they were before you leave.
Yeah.
You want to do that? We're kind of like in a, between a rock and a hard place right here now because.
Anything you've done in the past becomes standing operating procedure in the future, you know, that's the way it is.
Yeah, and very often, I mean, unfortunately, you get bound to actions that have been taken in your name that you had no knowledge of.
No knowledge of. Okay, then if you make a motion, Paul?
Okay. And then this will go on record then, that any other committee in town can, can use this.
Right.
With the request.
One caveat, and we had talked before we make the motion, we had talked about any expenses we incur. If it's eleven degrees out, we got to turn the heat up in a place, that's going to cost us money and our director.
That's a fairly de minimis expense.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the expense if we have to bring people in to open or close the building.
And we have no, we have no policy for giving out keys since we have this key fob, security system.
Well, we, we did intend that there would be certain activities, once they were permitted, that we would allow the person to go over to the police department, pick up the key fob, open and close.
Okay.
And we have to make a determination based upon who's using it as to whether they have the ability to, you know, know how to use the building. I mean, obviously, the church who's been there for years.
Well, the church only uses, they use the outside.
Yeah.
They use the inside.
They, they use the inside too?
Well, they use it to store bread and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then they're doing that for somebody, they know where the lights are, they know where the heat is. But if it was a group that, you know, we didn't know and didn't know us, then we would have to either take some time to get them acquainted with the system or have an employee there.
Well, certainly somebody on the committee that's asking the users must have knowledge of where the lights are.
Right, and they're going to have to accept responsibility for the, for the fob.
All right, make a motion that we allow the Democratic Committee to use the C.O.A. for their meeting.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jury meeting.
Okay. Also, the next thing here that just came in, this is immediate release from State Representative Carol Viola announces district office hours for February two thousand and fourteen. Freetown, Mass., January twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen. Office hours will be held at the Freetown Senior Center at two-two-seven Chase Road, East Freetown, on Monday, February third, at nine-thirty to ten-thirty. And in a sonnet, at the Freetown Town Hall, Free North Main Street, first floor, on February tenth, from ten A.M. to twelve noon. Each is fully handicapped accessible, downstairs in the town hall is strictly handicapped accessible. And appointments can also be scheduled by calling six-one-seven-seven-two-two-two-four-six-zero or seven-seven-four-three-one-nine-two-five-four-four. And we thank Rep. Viola for having these office hours here in town. Also, let's see, this is, this is, this is hot off the presses. For a guy that used to be a pressman, right?
Yeah. Worked in the business. They are hot when they come off the fly.
Well, they, they don't do that anymore.
Are you a lip reader, Ally, because he's reading it to himself?
Well, I'm trying to read it, what it says first before I start talking on the air here. All right. Apparently, this is from the Rainbow Workshop. And the week of February ninth to the fourteenth is designated as to celebrate Uganda Week. And she's asking for a proclamation, and she would like the Board of Selectmen to attend the festivities that are going to be held at the elementary school. I'm trying to find the date on the elementary school, Ally.
I think it's the fourteenth.
It's the fourteenth.
February fourteenth, there you go. February fourteenth, at what time?
I believe it's at seven.
Seven in the evening. Seven in the evening, you'll probably be back, I believe, from taking your lovely wife out for a, for Valentine's supper.
Thanks for reminding me, yeah.
So in that case, I'll probably be back also, so we, and maybe Lisa will be back too.
You go to the senior special for dinner?
I'm thinking of Uganda, I think Valentine Day is going to be a hot dog and then a concert.
That'd sound, that'll sound good, dinner and a concert?
There you go, we'll come, all right. So listen, what we'll end up doing is either one, two, or all three of us will go and make the presentation on the fourteenth at seven o'clock.
I'm sorry about that, but.
Okay, all right, all right. Now, what else do we have here? Under old business, we're getting to you.
We're almost there.
Under old business.
I'm old?
Old business, no, no, you're, you're not under old business.
So am I.
The status of, oh God, this will be going on for a hundred years, the bounds.
Yeah, but we're not dealing with that until spring.
That's right.
I've touched base with, we're touching base with Joe McCardle, trying to get the right dates on the Leona Agreement.
Okay. And what about those other issues? Anything more on getting those, that agreement signed?
I talked to Joe Fair on Saturday, and he seems to think it's moving forward.
Okay, good. The elementary lease.
I hope they didn't bill me for all of that, by the way.
When you talked to him, oh, he was at the, he was at the M.M.A. meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And I hope he didn't bill us for that. Let's see, the lease agreement.
And the board's reviewing their copies of that right now.
The lease agreement, yes, yes. You know what? It's tough reading.
It's so exciting, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right. Snow plowing costs, that has to do with the elementary.
That was part of the lease.
By the lease agreement.
Right.
All right, that's about it, other than, any updates on Freetown Screw or feasibility study?
Feasibility study is still moving along, where we've identified some buildings that I think we could perhaps look at when we get some warmer weather, if we travel to them. The Freetown Screw, we're working on putting the demolition specs together.
Good, geez, that eyesore will be gone.
I hope so.
Yeah, I hope so too.
But, oh, thank you for reminding me. Freetown Screw, I've asked Nobis Engineering to come in and brief the board on the status of the project at our next Board of Selectment meeting.
Okay, good. The other thing is, we had some discussion about, at one point last, I guess in the late summer, about the boat ramp and the town beach.
Right.
And I think the building inspector has been out looking around, and she's going to talk to you.
Okay.
All right, about.
Yeah, and Lisa asked that we have the boat ramp discussion as part of our budget discussions anyway.
Right, okay. And the budget discussion, how, any budgets coming in yet from the departments?
They're due today.
And then once they come in and Janice gets them into the system, we'll get copies?
Right. Yeah, there'll be a couple that we won't get originally as part of this, part of the, we've got a week and get everything in to get capital, and so I won't be able to pull those together until after everything comes in.
The governor's budget wasn't too promising.
No, but the Speaker spoke at the conference on Saturday and basically said the House is going to be taking some action, and his talk was a lot more optimistic than the governor's.
Thank God, because the governor's budget wasn't very good to us. All right, new business, a young lady from Chipaway Road.
Hello, gentlemen, I can talk now?
You can talk. Now, you've been talking for a while, but can you identify yourself as a woman?
I've been humming. I'm Cheryl Woodis and I live on Chipaway Road. I've been there approximately forty-three years, and I'm here because I sent you, gentlemen, a letter in January, I'm sure you received it.
I read it.
And I'm just here to discuss if you try to help me on any of these issues.
Why don't you bring up the issues for the camera so everybody knows what we're talking about?
Sure. I live on Chipaway Road, like I say, just above the railroad tracks, and it's just extremely noisy. Evidently, we have garbage disposal trucks, freight, A.B.C., coming down the road. I know there's a speed limit, it says thirty-five, but there, when they hit the bump at thirty-five, I mean, my house shakes, the windows rattle, it's horrible. There is garbage, the back that the truck should be down on, you know, the thing, is open. I've picked up diapers off the road because I'm a neat freak. I mean, it's a main road into town, always has been. And I, you know, I pick up the waste and what have you, I've had maggots on the street there, that's not my job. I take care of my property. It's horrible, it's horrible.
When you say you live above the tracks, you're talking about when you're coming out of New Bedford?
I'm close to the corner.
Almost up to the corner, so you're between the New Bedford line and where Brayley Four Corners is?
Yeah.
Okay, now those trucks are going which way?
They're going down Quantapug Road to go to the landfill.
To go to the landfill that way.
Which when that landfill opened, they weren't supposed to be using that access, it was supposed to be.
I thought they were coming from, they, they're, I thought they were supposed to.
They're coming from the city.
Right, but I thought they were going into the landfill through New Bedford.
They're supposed to by Oak Plainville Road, but you go try to get down Oak Plainville Road, it was in my letter. You can't get through there at certain times because of Fontz Conna Medical. There's so much traffic, these guys are in a hurry.
They're detouring.
They're detouring, it's horrible, it is horrible, I'm not exaggerating. In the summer, I like fresh air. It's supposed to be the country, correct? I can't have my windows open, I can't hear a dawn thing on the TV.
Their running through traffic isn't our problem. Them having to deal with traffic isn't our problem.
I don't mind the traffic, it's the noise and the dirt and the filth. I mean, you go on the road there, it's, the road needs repair, you go along, I went by Quantapug Road, the road's nice and smooth. There's divots in the road, and they put in that fill, you know, that concrete fill, they hit the bumps and it's bang. I mean, tractor trailers, trucks coming down that road, it's horrible.
Are you suggesting that, I'm trying to get up to speed here, at one time, they were supposed to come a different way, but because of the traffic, they're using Quantapug Road as a shortcut?
Yeah.
Was there some kind of agreement in your, in the back of your mind where they were supposed to?
When it was first opening, that's the way it was supposed to be done, that was years and years ago.
So something's changed.
Evidently.
Because they don't want to deal with the traffic in front of the Hawthorne Medical and all those, or they've changed their route?
Evidently. It's always the same trucks, but not just, that's, that's the garbage issue, you know, that's a garbage issue. I, if the road may have been smoother, you know what I'm saying, with these other big tractor trailers, you had to see the commotion that was down the road the other day. There was this huge double.
But aren't they doing some work off that road?
Off Chipaway Road?
No, off of.
Brayley Road, yeah.
Chipaway, where the tracks are, aren't they doing some construction up in the woods there?
Way in the back, you have to access Brayley Road, it doesn't go from Chipaway Road.
But you live on the Chipaway Road section that's headed towards New Bedford?
No. When you come, when you come down Brayley Road, New Bedford, that hits, it hits Chipaway.
Chipaway, right, you're between the tracks and.
I'm after the tracks.
At the Four Corners?
Yes.
Before the Four Corners?
Yes.
Okay, I know where you're going.
The gray ranch.
Okay.
The gray ranch with the garage, that, now, why should I pay all these taxes, I'm not getting services here, that's another issue, I sent them a letter. I, I only want what's mine.
What services aren't you getting?
I don't have the service of the clean, the clean, I have to go out in the street and pick up garbage. I'm living with this noise. I mean, come on, this is horrible, horrible, I'm a senior citizen.
I am too.
Well, I bet it's very quiet on your road.
No.
I, why should I pay tax rate when I live with this, the tax rate that everyone else pays in town? When I go, every now and then, I'll take a different route, because I'm still working, I work a part-time job, drive around, it's so quiet in some areas, so, so quiet. All this business coming in on Brayley Road, okay, the tax rate's much higher on Brayley Road, I can appreciate you people want it. But then you had to see this commotion, this is just horrible, this double-wide tractor trailer was at the corner and couldn't make the corner onto Brayley Road. This guy was backing up, there was traffic all on the road, busy time of the day. If there was a fire, an ambulance, or anything coming by there, God forbid, and I am not exaggerating.
What do you mean by double wide?
The double length, the double length, I'm sorry.
Double trailer?
Yes, that's how, you have to see them at nighttime coming by, no label on them, just netwear. I'm sorry. Backing up on that road, now the road is narrow to begin with, you know that, at the Four Corners, because that house is right. And this is constant, this is constant, these are the double-length trailers, I don't even know how you people can allow them in town. I put it in the letter, that's going to be illegal.
They're going into the landfill?
They take a right onto Brayley Road, I don't know where they're going.
They take a right onto Brayley Road?
Double wide.
No, we could allow double wide into the, into the park.
That, I said.
I'll ask Carlton to contact Mrs. Waters and let it, because he sounded like he should, it would probably be law enforcement.
Twenty-one Chipaway Road.
Twenty-one, I couldn't remember. Ally, do you have her phone number?
I'm not trying to be.
No, we're going to have the police chief.
We're going to have the police chief calling you and.
I'm not, I'm not sure that, that we allow.
These are double length.
Double trailers.
A lot of them, they're not even supposed to get off the interstate, off the interstate.
Well, they, they obviously have to get off the interstate at some point.
But where are they going?
But a lot of times, they make, they make them go to a truck stop, drop one trailer.
There's no names on these.
But, but this, you know, ultimately, this becomes a law enforcement and traffic control issue, so it's more properly dealt with by the police chief at this point.
Okay, we're going to, we'll have Carlton.
Wouldn't you call that a fire hazard?
I don't know what I'd call it at the moment.
I'd call it a big mess, it's horrible, one of these, this is, in the summer, you have to come see my driveway.
You're saying that this happens almo- almost every day?
Oh, yeah.
These trucks, these trucks, every day?
Yeah. Two that day, the guy that backed up was a different one that came, it was about an hour later.
What time is, what time are these trucks going down there?
It's usually during the day, I work a part-time job at assisted living, so I leave my house about one-thirty. So this is all this, you know, I mean, I may have majority of the day. I do have a couple of days off during the week, sometimes the weekend, you know.
What was your other issues that you had? I remember reading the letter a couple, two weeks ago. Had something to do with.
Go ahead.
Taxes or something?
Oh, yes. A patio. I had blown-in insulation put in my house, and some gentleman came to say he was in. A patio. I had blown-in insulation put in my house, and some gentleman came to say he was inspecting my insulation. I don't know who he was. He said he was from the town, inspecting, and next thing I know, he said, "They said I didn't get a permit for this. I know I didn't need a permit, 'cause it's blown-in insulation. It was a weatherization program. They offered it to me." So, he walked, he said, "You don't mind if I walk around the yard?"
How long ago was this?
Oh, I don't remember. When I got my bill, it had to be in the fall, 'cause I was outside.
That's when you had the blown-in insulation going?
Yeah.
Okay.
He came and inspected. I don't know who he was. So, he says, "Do you mind if I walk around? Oh, this is nice." So, I said, "No." I didn't know he was poking around my yard. Next thing I know, I get a real estate tax bill for a nine-hundred-dollar patio that I've had there for fifteen, twenty years. These are these little squares. I bought it at the Grossman's Outlet for ninety-nine cents each, and they sit on top of the ground. That's not attached to anything. It's just sitting there like walking steps.
And how mu- they valued that at nine-hundred dollars?
Yes.
So, what's the tax?
This is what set me all off.
How much tax did they charge you?
I have no idea. My bill went up something or other, and I'm disputing that, 'cause they got my house bad.
A hundred dollars. It went up a hundred bucks.
Yeah, but the, the patio was less than a hundred.
Oh, for god's sakes, it's just little.
It was like twelve bucks. Yeah, I don't know why, did you, did you take, file abatement form downstairs?
I sent in all the stuff, yes. Then they want me to put on the value of all these houses and everything, and your website doesn't, it's from two thousand twelve, so how am I supposed to do that? Am I gonna knock on people's doors and say, "How much did you pay on taxes?" I don't care when anybody else paid.
You care what you pay.
I'm living with my house shaking like this, I'm gonna be a nervous, I'm sorry, I'm on cameras. I'm gonna be a nervous wreck. I'm forty-three years there. Can't you appreciate that, forty-three years?
I got forty years at my place.
Well, see, I even got three more. And do you have those big things coming by your house?
We have a lot more traffic now than we ever.
He has problems with his neighbor who lives across the street from him.
Really?
Oh, that would be me.
It might be easier to get rid of an, oh, really? I'm sorry.
It might, you were gonna say it might be easier to get rid of your neighbor.
Even these trucks. Really? I, it's good to laugh, it is, 'cause I'm so upset about this, John.
As long as he doesn't get rid of his neighbor, then, you know?
Who's your neighbor? You. Well, let me, where do you live? I'm, I, you know.
Oh, god, you want me to put on camera, the people that come down here?
Well, write it down, nobody can see.
I'll tell you later, after the camera's locked.
But, I mean, it's gonna be a lot quieter than where I am. No, there, that land with all those, there's no activity going on in Chipaway Road. They, he digs holes and stuff.
If they're going down and taking rice, they must be going to those industrial places down there.
Whatever could be a double-wide truck.
One of them was parked in, um, Toto Welding.
Parked in Toto Welding?
Yeah, he couldn't get out of the lot. See, I go that way to go get my mail, and it must be, it must be some radar in me, because every time I go down there, I see what the problem is, you know?
So, loo- look.
How about Toto Welding going down the road? I mean, please. They got these big tanks in an open truck.
Yeah.
Foot flopping around. You're talking about helium, acetylene, oxygen, propane, bang, 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 bang.
Well, they're, they're tied in there, and they may jiggle and, and ring a little bit, but they're safe canisters. That's how they transport that stuff.
Yeah, it is. But, you hit railroad tracks, you have these other people coming down the road, suppose there's an accident. That should be in a bed, a bedded truck, and they do have bedded trucks. I've, I've seen acetylene explode. I worked in the automobile companies for a while.
What are you, I mean, what are you looking for us to do?
Yeah, what would you like us to do, Cheryl?
I would like the speed on the.
As your neighbors. We're all neighbors. Hey, we're all compatriots in the same town here.
And I pay you people to do this. All I want is that road water.
That's true.
I know someone, well, I do pay you, don't I? And that, Ally, she's, she's.
She's fantastic, isn't she?
Oh, she is such a sweetheart. I cried after I got off the phone, 'cause I yelled at her. I said, "I'll cry, I'm done with her." Not really yelled, but I raised my voice. Yeah, she is, she's a sweetheart.
How could you yell at her?
I don't know, I got upset.
Gotta yell at somebody, call Paul.
Oh, I don't want, I just want, I just wanna stay here, and I just want it quiet.
But, seriously, now, I mean, what, what kind of wrong with, that section of road, you want that fixed?
There's a bump. It's not the railroad track, because the railroad track is kind of, it's kind of smooth, but when they come over the track, they, above it, they hit this bang, it's a big bang. It needs to be smoothed out.
So, they'd like us to fix the road, find out why the double wides are going down. That doesn't make any sense to me at all, what double wides.
These are hu- and I'm tell, I'm saying, what in the world? And I'm seeing the traffic pile up. Course, I'm sitting there, the living room windows, they are, can I not miss those commotion? And I see the double-wide backing up, and I'm saying, what's going on? Well, he couldn't, he couldn't get around the corner, and then they had all this traffic. Mind you, that's a four-way stop there, so this kazea, kazea, the worst time of the day. And I'm saying, that's just terrific, 'cause I had to go buy ambulance about a month ago at the hospital. I'm saying, gee, I can see me just having my heart attack right in the middle of the road here.
They wouldn't get through.
Does the traffic continue to get worse every year it must?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's getting worse.
That's one of the issues, there's more and more cars on the road.
Well, the thing is, I don't even know why they're coming that way, when it's so much wider, Brayley Road the other way. You know what I mean, coming in from the, they must come.
Chase Road, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, come down by Chase. But, you know, we can't control how people.
Oh, I know that.
How the truckers go, you know?
Oh, I know that, I know that, but I'm just.
So, it's not the trucks that are going with garbage, uh.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's also.
The garbage falling off of them, yeah.
And they go, but they're going left off the Quanapug.
Exactly, and I think the reason that the stuff is falling off, the garbage is falling off, because they're hitting that, you can hear it, and everything just rattles in the truck. But the thing is, those tops of those trucks, and ABC has been told that before by other cities and towns. They need that flap to come down, and they're driving, and it's up. So, all the stuff that's inside, now, the compressors inside is all falling out. They don't keep it covered. There's a cover that goes over the top of it. Why they don't, I don't know. I guess most people aren't home during the day like I am. Oh, I, I don't know.
Alright, and in the part on the tax issue, you're gonna take care of that with the assessors?
Well, I certainly hope so, I mean, you know.
Did you file the paperwork?
I did.
Okay.
Well, I hope, I wish you success, but understand this. This board has absolutely zero authority over the assessors.
I know.
State statutes protect them.
Are they down there now? They were supposed to have a meeting today. It was posted in the standard titles.
What time is the meeting?
It was being, it was at nine o'clock, and they told, yeah, they told me no meeting.
They said no meeting?
Maybe they knew who I was, and they were gonna try to say.
My taxes also went up, so I said to myself, "I'll smoke this out and find out why."
I don't even mind them going up, going up, and I don't mind paying for them, but I'm not getting the service that I deserve from town. I pay, you know, to have services. You know, they don't clean the road, they don't pick up, it's a big mess over there. I don't know why.
Well, we'll, we'll, we will work toward getting that.
It's a main road into town.
I know.
And there's a lot of houses for sale in town. It's horrible. What's going on? Coming, I don't come up this way a lot. A lot of them with, uh, big things, they must be abandoned property.
Freetown?
Yeah.
Weird.
When I came by here, there was a road with a big thing on it. There's one down the street from me. They haven't, they haven't, nobody's lived in that house in over a year. Two houses down. Let me see what else there was, 'cause I don't wanna keep.
You must be getting to the bottom of that list.
Oh, this is, that's an EPA issue. I told you about that. About the turkeys, deer. In the back of my yard, there's a big wide-open area, and I don't know why they pick my yard, but they're beautiful. There's deer and turkey and wild ducks that come through, and I, maybe they should be, I mean, there's a handicap sign over there. There hasn't been a handicapped child in town for fifteen years, and, uh.
Well, that's good, it slows traffic down.
Oh, I thought so. That's a joke. It does not slow traffic down. There, these animals are constantly crossing the road, and that's an EPA issue, you know, they, the traffic, but something should be posted. I'd hate to see it. Well, I have seen a deer down since I've been here.
So, you think animals crossing the street are an issue because of the amount of traffic, an accident, or killing the animal?
Killing the animals. You see what happened to that guy in Dartmouth that ran over the ducks and didn't even stop at the mall. Don't you remember that?
Yeah, that was a few years ago.
Yeah, well, this is constantly. The turkeys were out there the other day.
There's not much you can do.
Yeah, horrible though.
There's not much you can do about the wild turkeys. They're all.
No, I know, but we need to protect them.
Do you like roast turkey?
Not really.
Maybe you could call them.
Not, not wild turkey. Not wild. Gentlemen, please help me. I'm not unreasonable.
On the truck issue, on the truck issue, I'm sure, uh, Richard's gonna talk with the police chief, uh, about the, uh, the trailers. On the, on the, uh, the road issue, maybe we can have our highway surveyor Chuck Macumberg go down and take a look at it. Certainly, he can't do anything at this point in the year.
Oh, I know.
Okay, but maybe they can touch it up in the springtime, and at least get rid of that bump. I think that's probably possible.
As soon as this meeting's over, Mr. Sadek and I are gonna jump in my truck and go check it out. We'll drive down there, because.
I hope one of those trailers are there, but I have to add one thing. I, no, it wasn't me, it was the lady downstairs. One of those trailers tried to back in my driveway in the summer, and if you happen to go by my house, you can see.
I'm gonna go by your house.
Oh, okay. It's very neat.
Twenty-one, right?
Twenty-one.
Yeah, I got it written down.
And.
Highlighted.
Um, again, my driveway, like this, right? One of those tractor trailers in the summer tried to back in my driveway. You see it, you're gonna see this crack. Cracked my driveway. What do I do? And that, it's right across where he was, came out, and now it's gone right up to here.
You didn't get the plate number, huh?
No.
I was too upset. I was watching the net weight, trying to get out of the, I'm sorry, get out of the driveway. It was just a horror show, because trying, good thing I didn't have a post office box or, you know, I, that's another thing. I have to pay to have a mail. The plows took down my, uh, post, my box twice. What did I do about it? I had to go to post doc.
Oh, I see your mailbox. You were looking for the word, that's why I said mailbox.
Yeah, mailbox. The plow took it down twice since I lived there. Now, I have to pay fifty-four dollars a year for a box. How does that seem fair?
I lost my mailbox a couple of times, and then I got smart. I set my mailbox right next to the utility pole.
Mm-hmm.
And now, I haven't lost it, because instead of, when they hit, they, they hit my mailbox, they hit the pole.
Really?
Yeah. So, that's why I ended up doing, and I have, uh, knock on wood, I haven't lost a mailbox in about fifteen years.
That's good, but I don't have anybody to put a box up for me. Can I send you the bill to get a box instead of a big car?
No, you can't send us a bill.
Well, that's what I'm saying. See, I can't, I can, I'm limited to the things that I can do. You know what I mean?
We all are, we all are.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm there by myself. Here I go, now I gotta go pay fifty-four dollars. Can I send you the bill? No. And I, now I gotta go out and use my car, wearing tan, my timing gas, to go pick up my mail. How is that fair? And my taxes go up. You're not recording me, are you?
Yes, you're on TV. In fact, you're gonna be able to, when's it gonna be, uh?
And I didn't wear any makeup.
Probably Friday.
Friday, you'd be able to watch yourself on TV on Friday.
On Friday.
And what time?
What time is it? I don't know, I gotta watch this.
Yeah, but isn't it on one of those?
Ten AM, Channel ninety-five.
Oh, ten AM.
Ninety, there's a couple of different kinds on there.
Ten AM.
In that.
Friday.
Channel ninety-five?
Ninety-five at ten AM.
Don't worry about makeup, Cheryl. I didn't wear any, neither did Paul.
It's useless at this point.
For Paul or I, does he?
Oh, me.
Oh, okay.
Older's older. But that's, hey, we all get there, right? Gentlemen, please. I'm not unreasonable.
We're gonna try to take your.
No, you're lo- you're lovely. It's been a pleasure having you here, and we appreciate your issues, we do.
Uh, I just have to voice my opinion. And besides, I couldn't go to my doctor's appointment, because there was this big fire on Route twenty-four, so closed all the highway.
Yeah, what, I heard that this morning on the news.
One of those oil tankers that filled, you know those big things on twenty-four that they fill up with oil?
Yeah.
It went off the road on twenty-four, so they had twenty-four closed both ways. It was a big fire, so I was going to, I was going to Far River for my doctor's appointment, and they had just called to cancel it, because one ninety-five was all backed up.
Yeah, and, and twenty-four was shut down?
Both sides.
Right.
Yeah, so, one ninety-five got backed up, and then people using Route six, and seventy-nine was backed up, so.
Pulled for a little bit. You, you come down one ninety-five?
Horrible.
Yeah, you would've got stuck.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I heard on the Boston news this morning.
Yeah, it was, I had just turned it on, and they, and I, the doctor's office, "Oh, no, no, don't come down," so, whatever. So, I, so I joined new people.
Hopefully, we can help you out, we'll see what happens.
Hope so, I'm not doing.
It's always a pleasure to see you, Cheryl.
If anything, I made you laugh today.
Yes, you did.
Very nice to meet you.
See, it's not too bad coming in and talking to the board.
It is not. And you, and you as well, and she is so, would you please turn that thing off?
She can't. This is a public meeting, we have to record it. That's where it is.
I should've invited my daughter.
Well, you tell your daughter that she can see her mother.
She lives in a sona.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
She can walk over and join you next time.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming here.
And I'm sorry I was, uh, interrupting your program, but I just wanna say goodbye.
Listen, don't yell at Ally anymore.
Thank you. You are, really, you are a smart one. I appreciate your time. Good day.
Good luck with your abatement, by the way. I wish you well.
I'm going down this, Ally.
Alright.
Do you want them?
Shake, no, 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 shake the door when you go, before you go in.
Okay. I'll hurt the glass.
Alright.
Have a good day.
Alright, bye-bye. Anything else that we have?
Nope. She's a very nice woman.
Very nicely. Very nice. You know, I can see, I'm surprised.
You can understand, well, drive by, I mean, drive by, I can understand your concern, your concern, you know?
The double trailer thing is the thing that I, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, and that's why I wanna refer to our traffic people.
People must, they must be coming out of the industrial park in New Bedford, and right down Brayley Road, and then Chipaway, because of the industrials.
And, and taking the garbage up through Quanapug, I didn't think they were supposed to do that.
Yeah, and I don't know whether that was, good, of course, I wasn't here then. I don't know whether that was part of their legis, was legislated, or whether that was part of the plan, because if they didn't have a legal obligation to it, then, you know, it's tough to enforce it, but they, they may have made that representation.
Maybe, uh, maybe just a call over, or a little note, uh, letter sent to, uh, New Bedford to say, "Hey, has anything changed? Why are these trucks coming through our, our town?" That might not be, make clear the whole issue.
Yeah.
So, alright. Ally, do we have anything else? That's it, we covered everything?
Yep.
Alright, well, thank you very much. It was a good meeting, and we can't wait to get, uh, Lisa back. She'll be back for the next meeting, and, uh, that's it. Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn!
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.